...will be recorded using cameras and other hot tripods in the boardroom. The meeting will be broadcast on YouTube but will not be aired on our cable station. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, September 20th, 2014 at 7:00 p.m. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone here to this evening. Your attendance this evening reflects an interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. I want to start with item number 142.15, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If we can have Vanessa Rialpel, Skylar Rialpel, and Julia Rialpel, all from Petey Graham Elementary School where Jennifer Curry is the principal, if you can come up to the front of the room.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay ladies, if you just stay right there for me, we're going to read your files and then we have something special for you for coming here this evening, so stand right here.
All right, I'm going to start with Vanessa. Vanessa is a sweet bubbly five-year-old who is in kindergarten in Mrs. Sain's class and loves everything princess and everything related to Disney movie Frozen. She is a joy to have in class and is a great friend to everyone around her. Our next person is Skylar. Skylar is a third grader in Mrs. Bolico's class.
(Inaudible).
And is older than her twin by three minutes. She loves to read, do arts and crafts, and her favorite sport is baseball. Skylar loves everything about school, learning new things and being with her friends. She's very caring and nurturing to her friends sometimes, considered a mother hen. When Skylar is at home, she loves to sleep. I can sleep through anything. And she is known as the sleeping bear of the family. Our other person is Julia, a third grader in Mrs. Beatty's class at Petey Graham Elementary. She is an amazing student who works very hard at everything she does. Julia loves to learn about all subjects, but most of all, she loves to learn about art. Julia is a friend to everyone and sets an example of what a model student should be. Julia is a leader in Mrs. Beatty's class as well as a joy to have around.
Okay ladies, if you stand right there, Mr. Griffin's going to come down and he's going to present to you on the board of education.
Let me get around on this side of you and turn around and place the audience again just like you were. It's a joy to have you here tonight to lead the board and the administration in the Pledge of Allegiance, we certainly do appreciate it. And I assume you brought some of your parents and friends with you, could you tell us Skylar who they are?
I brought my mom and my sister Isabella.
And one other thing, your principal is here, can you let her introduce her?
My name is Mrs. Curry.
Good. Well, on behalf of the board and the administration, we appreciate your leading us in the pledge again, and I'm going to start with you Skylar. This is a certificate of award from the school board, Vanessa and Julia. Thank you so much for leading us, we appreciate it. Have a good evening. I think she wants to take some pictures here.
Do you want to put your little sister in the middle?
Yes.
Take a step over so Mr. Griffin can see behind you.
Want to stand right here behind you?
Yeah. All right. Can you hold your certificate up?
Stand right there.
(Inaudible). I have this looking smile. I'm going to do one more, can you give me one more time?
You want to take one more out?
Yeah, just right. Can you put your certificate up? Good job. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Holding on to item number 143.15, roll call, Mrs. Meddell.
Everything out of my bag, but. Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Present.
Mrs. Madison?
Present.
I am here, and Mrs. Walker?
Present, with the record reflect seven present and zero absent. Moving on to item number 144.15, recognition and presentation, Dr. Harmala.
Yes, I'm actually going to hand this right over to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Larson.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, we have plaques. They used to send us the plaque every year, now they're just sending us the year, so we just put it on. That's from GFOA and then also the ASBO plaque. It's my privilege to inform the Board of Education, Dr. Harmala, and the listening audience that the district has received excellence in financial reporting awards for the fiscal year 2012-13 from the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO, and Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. This is the 15th consecutive year that the district has met the standards to receive the awards from both organizations, OREXA-CAPR, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial This is the highest recognition of financial reporting for government entities and is not an easy feat to complete. The district's financial statements are reviewed according to accounting principles and standards. The award signifies that the district is reporting its financial statements properly in accordance with the current accounting principles and standards. To do this, the district must maintain internal controls over accounting and financial transaction throughout the year. This requires that all employees in the district perform transactions properly throughout the year. In essence, this award really recognizes that all staff in the district are performing a good job. This award is especially important in that it provides financial information necessary for the recent bond refunding, which saved taxpayers over $3 million. With that in mind, I do want to recognize Dave Callmire, he's in the audience, is business department staff, and Sue Rossin for the work they do throughout the year coordinating, reviewing, and reporting financial transactions. Without their diligence and preparation, these awards would not be possible.
Thank you. And I think that deserves a round of applause. Any questions?
I have a question, but I just think it should be noted for the record, 15 consecutive years of excellence in financial reporting deserves a big round of applause, and I think it's already highlighted, Mr. Callmire and his staff's part of this. People don't always get the recognition behind the thing they deserve, and in this case, richly deserved. It's really, I think, an honor to have a district this size have 15 years of excellence in reporting. And I highly commend the administration, people at work within the administration, but also the auditors that are here tonight also speak on the audit. So, thank you very much for a job well done. Sometimes we forget to say that, I don't want to forget to say that tonight.
Any one else? All right, thank you. Moving on, before we go to the next agenda item, I just want to make a note of correction. At the last board meeting during citizen comments, two candidates were in the audience, and they spoke about their campaign, and I stopped them. And the reason I stopped them was because during that time, my knowledge and what I thought to be campaign law stated that there can be 100 feet within a school district. But after checking and doing further investigation, we found out that it's only, that law only relates to election day. So, according to the Open Meetings Act, those two had a right to speak about whatever they wanted to during those three minutes. So, it was asked that we were stripping it from the minutes, but we won't be doing that. Everything will remain the same as it was stated at the meeting last month. With that being said, we're going to move on to item number 146.15, or 145.15, citizen comments, agenda items only. This is for agenda items. Anyone? Mr. Freud?
Since we're talking about things being stripped from the record, Mr. Weaver's comments were stripped from the record on page 13, what he said is not listed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to item number 146.15, the agenda.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes, with the record reflect seven zero, motion passes. Moving on to item number 147.15, review and approval, business services and finance items. Mr. Larson, Skylar.
Thank you, ma'am president. Tonight we have Jeff Higgins and Nate Troyer from Plant Moran to present a summary of the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Their presentation will highlight financial information reported in the 2013-14 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I think we're really fortunate to have Plant Moran as our auditors, very able to discuss accounting and financial transactions throughout the year with Jeff and Nate to verify our understanding of accounting principles and standards to properly report transactions and events as they happen. I believe this is important for the district and for Plant Moran to be able to talk openly throughout the year to have a better understanding when that year end comes. Again, I want to recognize Dave Callmire for his preparation of work with the auditors. He monitors accounting and financial transactions throughout the year, from which he prepares the reports for the auditors in order for them to efficiently perform the annual audit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Well, thank you and good evening. So again, my name is Jeff Higgins, I'm here with Nate Troyer. I am the partner on the engagement for the annual audit with Plant Moran, and Nate would be the manager on the engagement. Tonight, we'd like to review the financial highlights for the district's year ended June 30th, 2014, put together a presentation touching on some of the highlights. Well, you'll note with your board pack that you've actually received three documents. There's the comprehensive annual financial report, this is the district's audit financial statement. There is the federal awards supplemental information, this is actually a separate audit on the federal programs administered by the district. And then finally, the report to the Board of Education. This is information on the audit process and the results of the audit, and is intended to provide more insight into the audit process itself. Now, as the district's auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. So, we conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Certainly happy to report here tonight that based on our various tests and procedures, we've rendered an unmodified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This would represent the highest level of assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements. Certainly, I'd be remiss if I didn't also congratulate the district for being awarded, again, for the 15th consecutive year, as it was mentioned. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association, and also, again, secondly, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting issued by the Association of School Business Officials. There's only a handful of districts across the state that are awarded both of these awards, and certainly does signify the district's conformance with the highest standards of financial reporting, so you should be commended for that. But with that, I'll turn it over to Nate to touch on some of the financial highlights within the financials.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, everyone. So, my first slide shows the balance sheet of the district as of June 30th, 2014. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the district and will really be the focus of the presentation. Assets totaled approximately $23.8 million. Included in that total was $7.3 million of cash and investments, as well as $15.8 million due from other governmental units, which relates to the July and August state aid payments. Liabilities totaled approximately $20 million. Included in that total was $11.3 million of accrued payroll for wages and benefits earned prior to June 30th and not paid till after. Also included in that balance was $3 million of a line of credit. In September 2013, the district obtained a line of credit with borrowings up to $6 million. This matured in August of 2014. Subsequent to year end, in July 2014, the district obtained a second line of credit with borrowings up to $8 million. This is set to expire in August 2015. Assets minus liabilities gets you to fund balance, which is then shown in a few different categories. Non-spendable are amounts that are not in spendable form, this would relate to inventory of $17,000. Assigned items are earmarked by management for an intended use of funds, so the 492-588 relates to the original June 30th, 2015 budget of expenditures over revenue. Anything that doesn't fall into the above categories then goes to unassigned with a total of approximately $3.2 million at year end for a combined fund balance of $3.7. Next slide shows the statement of revenue expenditures and change in fund balance for the year. You can see the total revenue came in at approximately $100 million. Total expenditures were at $101.7 million, for revenue under expenditures of approximately $1.8 million. Other financing sources were approximately $280,000 for a net change in fund balance of a decrease of $1.5 million. When added to beginning fund balance of approximately 5.2, you arrive again at $3.7 million fund balance, and once you subtract the non-spendable and assigned balances of 510, you can arrive at that unassigned fund balance of $3.2 million. Next slide shows the general fund budget-to-actual comparison. Total revenues were budgeted at $101 million, actual came in at about $100 million for variance of approximately $1 million. Total expenditures were budgeted at $103.8 million, actual results were $101.7 for variance of slightly over $2 million. Other financing sources were budgeted at $350,000, actual was $280,000 for variance of slightly under $70,000. The net change in fund balance was budgeted at $2.4 million, actual was just under $1.5 million for a positive variance of $967,000. Two items to note on that variance is that, one, it's a state requirement that the district has a positive variance, as it's against state law to spend more than is approved by the board. The second is, we often compare that to expenditures, so if you take the $967 divided by the $101 million, you arrive at less than a 1% variance in total expenditures. We typically recommend districts are within 2% to ensure that accuracy of the budgeting process, so Wayne Westland would be well within that percentage or that range. Next slide shows where the money came from this year. You can see that the biggest piece this year and every year comes from the foundation allowance, and that's based on your basic formula of your foundation, your per pupil allowance times the blended pupil count. I think what that shows is that the district has very little ability to significantly impact revenues on a yearly basis because their biggest revenue was based on that basic formula. Next slide shows what the money was spent on this year. And with the school districts being a service industry, the number one cost each year will be people costs, and that's really illustrated by 88% or $89.1 billion of total expenditures being spent on salaries and fringe benefits. This next slide is a historical look at the general fund fund balance from 2005 until what the projection of 2015 will be. Couple of quick items to note, so in between 2010 and 2011, we saw an increase of $4.7 million. This was a result of the 21st Century Schools initiatives, as well as other cost containment efforts. Between 2012 and 2013, there was a decrease of $6.6 million. That was mainly the cause or an effect of losing the Wayne Westland language funding from the state of Michigan. The last thing to point out here is, so the 2015 estimated fund balance, that is based on taking what we know, the June 30th, 2014 fund balance, and factoring in that, again, that original budget for the June 30th, 2015 year end, which showed a $419,000 amount of expenditures over revenue. Next slide shows a historical look at the per pupil foundation allowance. You can see that in 1415, we know that the amount will increase from $7,073 per student to $7,251 per student. And the thing to note with that is that even with that increase this year, we're still lower than 2004, 2005. So essentially, the state is asking the district to do more with less funds. My last slide is a common issue that many districts have in the state, and that's declining student enrollment. In the last four years statewide, total student enrollment has decreased by 100,000 students. So this is not a circumstance that's unique to Wayne Westland, but when you're receiving less money per student and you're having less students each year, I think it's easy to see how that can cause a financial stress at the district level. With that, I'll pass it back to Jeff to talk about future uncertainties.
So, as those last couple slides have shown, obviously, it's been a very difficult environment for school districts for the last several years in the state of Michigan. And all of that weighs on then the district's fund balance. So, again, just to talk about fund balance, fund balance really represents the cumulative results of past year's operations, it's sometimes referred to as the rainy day fund. Fund balance really allows the district to deal with unforeseen circumstances and challenges that it might face in its financial situation, and also provides cash flow on a more short-term basis as the needs arise. And so, we just want to highlight, you know, again, a few of the stresses that the districts have to deal with and that therefore impact that fund balance level. Obviously, you know, depends on the state economy, as we saw a couple minutes ago, over 80% of the district's revenue is determined by state lawmakers, it's not determined by local school boards. And the district's revenue is really determined in Lansing, and as you saw that graph, there's been, you know, significant declines over the last several years. Obviously, that creates challenges for the district to have to deal with. You know, another significant concern that's out there at the moment is future retirement system contributions. The district is required to participate in the MIPSR system, but has really no ability to influence the contribution rate. It's, again, something that's dictated by Lansing and based on their analysis of what needs to be contributed. You know, currently, that rate's about 25% of payroll costs the district has to contribute in that system. There's been some measures taken in Lansing to try to soften or keep that rate in check, if you will, but there's really no guarantee as to where that's going to go in the future and that rate continues to increase. Healthcare costs are obviously always a concern, elongated state aid payments. So, the district obviously receives the majority of its funding from the state, the state actually pays that out in 11 installments from October through August. So, you don't receive a payment in September, so you have to have the cash internally, and that's, again, with fund balance, is important to help deal with that delay in payments. And the district actually then receives 18% of its state aid after the end of your fiscal year, so there's been a shifting of payments to the district, which really creates problems at the local level. Again, you really have no control over that. And of course, future student counts, again, has a significant impact on the financial situation of districts. Over 70% of districts have experienced, of traditional K-12 school districts have experienced declines in enrollment, so again, that's something that districts across the state are having to deal with. And all of that then, of course, has an impact on the district's fund balance or the rainy day fund. We have a five-year history here comparing Wayne Westland's fund balance percentage to the state aid average, or the state average. Again, this is a common method to evaluate the level of fund balance that a district might have, and what this does is take the fund balance, which in this case is about $3.7 million, and divide it by total expenditures of about $101,734,000 for the district, to give some level of context to how much fund balance do we have compared to our budget in total. Again, that puts us at about 3.64%. You can see for the last five years, we've put the district's percentage as compared to the statewide average for that year, excluding Detroit. Detroit tends to skew the numbers just on that one district, so we pulled that out of the analysis. But again, you can see where we compare to the statewide numbers. And again, just to give us some more context, what that $3.7 million means is if you look at the district's total budget, that's about six days of operational costs for the district. So, your fund balance, your rainy day fund today provides about six days of cushion, if you will, in the event that there is some sort of financial need. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. No questions? So, at this camera, any kind of motion? Mr. Griffin? Supported by Dr. Weaver, any discussion? Roll call, both please. Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes. With the record reflect seven zero, item B.
Thank you, ma'am president. Before they leave, I just wanted to thank them, Jeff and Nate, they came out this afternoon at 3 o'clock, met with union representatives, you know, we started that last year. I think it's an important process to have an independent, you know, source come in and report on the finances, and, you know, they answered questions, you know, they just tell it the way it is. So, I think it's an important process that we're going to keep doing every year.
Thank you again.
Great, thank you. I'm not going to read over the resolution, but I am going to give you some information on the history and some of the background of Blanchett Mills School. Public Act 96 and 97, in 2013 dissolved the school district of City Inkster, due to being in a deficit position. The district was quartered with its students and property being distributed among four districts, Romulus, Taylor, Westwood, and of course, Wayne Westland. Students north of Michigan Avenue and west of Millville were rezoned to Wayne Westland. Within this zone is the building in Blanchett Middle School located on Palmer and Henry Rough. Public Act 96 and 97 transferred ownership of the building and property to Wayne Westland. The building, when we received it, was in very rough shape, that was in August of 2013, and has deteriorated further due to the harsh winter. At the time, we had estimated that basic structural and mechanical repairs required were estimated at about $1.5 million. We have maintained heat and water in the vacant Blanchett Mills School throughout the time of ownership, but have not made repairs. We continue to plow and maintain security at the building. To occupy Blanchett Mills School, Wayne Westland would need to invest at least one year sinking fund budget to bring it up to acceptable standards. Current enrollment of Wayne Westland does not support operation of Blanchett Mills School. Board policy 3950, surplus land for buildings requires board approval for disposal of property in excess of $1,000. disposal of property in excess of one thousand dollars. Public Act One sixteen of two thousand and fourteen provided five million dollars for the Inkster and Buena Vista dissolution. And this is for operating cost reimbursement from the state. For the period of thirteen fifteen, we have estimated about fifty thousand dollars that we will be submitting for reimbursement to the state. This Public Act One sixteen also provides demolition costs of the building received, and any remaining funds will be carried over to fourteen fifteen if one of the districts continues to operate the buildings that they received. Wayne Risa and Barton Mallow, which is their construction manager, prepared a request for proposal to demolish the buildings required by the receiving districts. The lowest bid received for Blanchett Middle School was five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Of this, three hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred was for asbestos maintenance. At this time, demolition of the school is completely covered through the state Public Act One sixteen of two thousand and fourteen, and any difference will be made up by Wayne Risa. So at this point in time, there is no cost to the district to demo Blanchett Middle School, and that's why we're recommending.
At this time, entertain a motion. Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion?
I know that in the community of Inkster, that there's an attachment to this building, and I have some empathy with that. In my hometown, my high school has gone through the same thing. It's been closed and it's set for demolition. And it makes me very, very sad. At the same time, the student enrollment in my town has fallen quite a bit, and the building that I attended and love so much is in disrepair. And it just makes good common sense not to continue to maintain that building, and certainly not to bring it up to code. And that's where we are with Blanchett. It's a sad thing for people who love that building, but it's the only, of course, that makes any sense for our school district.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we need to read this into?
Yeah.
Do we have looked at every possibility for repurposing this building?
Repurposing it? We would have to spend probably one and a half to two million dollars to bring it up to any condition to...
Repurpose.
To repurpose. I mean, there's leaking ceilings, you know, it's... Tim, disrepair, that's putting it to life.
After attending a lot of meetings and hearing, not only here, but also with Inkster meetings and recent meetings, that a lot of the buildings were in major disrepair and monies were not available to make those repairs at the time. And I'm not sure that all of the community was made aware of the conditions the buildings were in, and that's truly unfortunate, because it puts them in a bad position of their emotional attachment, realizing that it's, you know, it needs to go, and us being the bearer of bad tidings, telling them that it needs to go. Could you please explain what happens if, should we sell the land? What will happen with the money that will be made off the purchase?
Per legislation, if we were to sell the land, it would go back to pay off the debt that the Inkster, former Inkster district has with the state.
Cindy, I'm sorry, Ms. Griffin. I know that there are still some in the Inkster community that hope one day to have a school district of their own again. I recognize that that building was in, as many, as all of their buildings were, were in very poor condition. What's the chances, I guess from a legislative standpoint, that Inkster will ever have their own school district again?
My opinion, zero.
Okay. Anyone else?
Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect seven zero. And you say it doesn't have to be written to... It doesn't, the resolution doesn't have to be rated directly?
No, no, it's just signed.
Moving on to item C, please.
Thank you again, Madam President. This is approval to liquidate district surplus equipment. That's on pages twenty-four and twenty through twenty-six. Again, board policy thirty-nine fifty requires board approval for disposal of real property in excess of one thousand dollars. This policy allows the superintendent to dispose of real property less than one thousand dollars. Items anticipated to be in excess of one thousand dollars are listed on pages twenty-five and twenty-six, and are primarily from maintenance and operations, food service, and transportation. Loose furnishings stored at Madison Elementary of less than one thousand are to be inventoried, then relocated to Bitter G's Warehouse in La Bonia. bitterg.com is the auction house that we used last year. We're going to use again to auction off all of our items. All items in the auction are no longer used by the district, or obsolete, or in need of repair, where replacement is more cost effective. Proceeds from the auction will be deposited in the general fund and used to offset the purchase of the cost of the haul trucks that you approved previously, then offset the refrigeration truck and the bus leases. Final auction information will be presented to the board upon completion of the auction.
At this time, entertain a motion. So moved by Mrs. Madison?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Morrison Schidler.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number one forty point one five, review and approval of human resource items. Mrs. Bow.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the pleasure tonight to bring to the board for your review and approval, recommendation for Kimberly Dolman to the Director of Alternative Education at Tinkham. Kim started with us in the twelve thirteenth school year as the supervisor of the Adult Continuing Education Program at Tinkham. Prior to that, she was a math teacher. She has a Bachelor of Science degree from Central Michigan University. She's endorsed with secondary math as well as integrated science. She also has a Master's degree in educational leadership from Eastern Michigan University, and she has certification for elementary and secondary as administrative cert. It should be noted, Kim has been serving as the interim director for the Tinkham Alternative Education since the beginning of the year.
entertain a motion? Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Schofield. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect seven zero. Welcome, Mrs. Dolman. Do you have anything that you'd like to say? We can give you a... What is it called? Microphone.
Thank you. To members of the board, Dr. Harmala, Mrs. Bow. Thank you very much for your recommendation and appointment for this position. I'm very excited to work in this capacity for you. Thank you.
Thank you again, and welcome. Moving on. Moving on to item number one four nine point one five, designation of delegates for the two thousand and fourteen MASP Delegate Assembly. My understanding as of now, there's only four of us that are registered to go, and my correct, and my... We are, we are able to have four delegates, so unless someone doesn't want to be a delegate, I suggest that all four of us can be delegates.
Make a motion, move if that affects.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Griffin, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any dissent? Okay, so roll call vote, please. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect seven zero. Do you need names to be read?
Moving on to item number one five zero point one five, Board of Education Committee Reports. We have two reports this evening, and let's start with the finance. Dr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. October seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, the Financial Committee met. Present were Dr. Harmala, Fred Weaver, Tom Buckaloo, Travis Griffin, Dave Callmire, John Albrecht, and Jim Larson Schidler. The guests presenters were Jeff Higgins from Plant Moran and Nathan Troyer, also from Plant Moran. The first item of discussion was Fiscal Thirteen fourteen Audit Review. Jeff Higgins and Nathan Troyer from Plant Moran highlighted the results of the Thirteen fourteen audit and answered questions from the committee. A PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the results of the Thirteen fourteen audit will be reviewed with union groups the afternoon of October twentieth, and then that evening at the board meeting. Item two, Blanchett Demolition and Vacant Buildings. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed the board resolution to demolish Blanchett Middle School. The resolution to dispose of the building will go before the Board of Education for approval at the meeting October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. If approved by the Board of Education, Wayne Risa will demo the building with funding from the state. There is no cost to the district, and the district will retain the land. The district requested that Wayne Risa include Kettering, Lincoln, Madison, and Vandenberg in the demolition bid. Bids were received by Wayne Risa on October fourteenth and fifteenth. Along with demolition costs, administration is in the process of collecting building renovation expense and land use data for the district's vacant properties, including our Inkster properties. At a date to be determined, administration will present the information to the board with a recommendation of the future use of Kettering, Lincoln, Madison, and Vandenberg. Item three, disposal of surplus equipment. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed the list of surplus equipment, i.e. furniture, vehicles, et cetera, that the district intends to auction through bitterg.com, which is the same company used last year. The proposal for disposal will go before the Board of Education for approval at the meeting of October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Item four, Dr. Harmala and Jim Larson Schidler discussed the construction project closeout statements. Each year, administration will review the report information to the board and report... I'm sorry, let me start again. Each year, administration will review and report information to the board on completed projects. The report will compare board-approved project costs to actual completed project costs. The first report will be prepared and presented to the Finance Committee in December or January, and then shared with the board. This is respectfully submitted by Jim Larson Schidler, Deputy Superintendent of Administrative and Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Schofield, you have the Policy Committee report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Present at the Policy Procedures Strategic Planning Committee meeting on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, were Dr. Harmala, Sally Madison Trustee, Carol Medel Trustee, myself, trustee, Ron Madison, community member, and Jan Teague, who served as our recording secretary. The meeting began at five fifty-nine P.M. The meeting goal was to develop the draft of a board mission statement to present to the entire board for their review and potential adoption at the regular meeting of the Board of Education on October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Dr. Harmala distributed a compilation of her notes from the discussion that took place at the September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen Board of Education meeting, samples of other Board of Education's mission statements, and Plymouth Canton's Board of Education operating principles. Trustee Schofield also shared her compiled common themes from the last board meeting as discussed by board members. Common themes mentioned by multiple board members were community, students, transparency, fiscal integrity, academics, and promoting the future of our students. Other themes mentioned by at least one board member included support administration, facilities, integrity, cooperation, and respect. Trustee Medel shared the mission statements from the following organizations: the Orwell Village School Board, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Milwaukee Board of School Directors, along with their governance statement, the Port Washington School District, and the Nevo School District. Trustee Madison read a first draft of a mission statement she compiled, using at least one word or theme from each board member. The committee agreed to place this working statement on the board and gather input from committee members. After discussions and numerous reviews and edits of the statement, the committee was in complete agreement that the following draft Board of Education mission statement was ready to present to the entire board for their review. And the draft read as follows: "As Wayne Westland Community School District Board of Education Trustees, we are accountable to uphold our commitment to provide the best education for our students' future through fiscal responsibility and by supporting all facets of family and community with the utmost respect, integrity, and transparency." In follow-up, a copy of the meeting minutes were emailed to the committee members on October first and to all board members within seventy-two hours following guidelines in the Board Operating Procedures Manual. All board members received a copy for their review of the meeting minutes, the draft of the mission statement, and the sample materials that were distributed at the committee meeting in their board packs on October third, two thousand and fourteen. And the Policy Committee recommended that the mission statement be placed on the October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen Board of Education meeting agenda for discussion and approval by the board. If there were only minor changes to the statement, it will be amended at the meeting, and if there were major changes, the board can decide to have the committee reconvene to make the necessary adjustments. The meeting was adjourned at six forty-one, and the notes were respectfully submitted by the recording secretary, Jan Teague.
Thank you, Mrs. Schofield. And that would send us into item number one five one point one five, the discussion and approval of proposed Board of Education mission statement. And does one, does someone from the Policy Committee want to lead the discussion?
On the board in the back of the room, you will see the A is listed as the statement that I just read from the minutes. That was the statement that we worked on at length at the meeting. Statement number B is a statement that was provided to us from trustee Buckaloo for consideration. My thought would be that, first of all, we talk about statement A. Perhaps we look at that one, get some feedback from everyone how they feel, and look at B, you know, are there parts of B we like, parts of A we like? I don't think we need to necessarily... We could take bits and pieces of both of them like we did at our Policy Committee meeting. And Mrs. Teague is prepared to go up and mark and cross out as we sit and look at that board if you choose to do that.
Mrs. Schofield, I guess my question would be maybe if Mr. Buckaloo, to why he felt the changes were needed at some point, but we can start with item A.
So, looking at item A, and I'll go back and just... So, looking at item A, and I'll go back and just kind of go back over what we talked about in the minutes. Mrs. Madison took all of the common themes from the last meeting, and she drafted a statement that used all of those common themes, making sure that every board member's voice was heard in her initial statement. We then took and crafted a -- and streamlined, we crafted a statement that, in many cases, was very -- was different from what Mrs. Madison gave us. We moved words around, we took words out, we substituted different words in, but used that as the basis. And we felt very strongly that the statement needed to reflect, if it was going to be different from the mission statement of the district, it needed to reflect that it's something that we as trustees are saying, that it's not the district saying that. The district has a mission statement, that this is what we as trustees are saying.
And I have to add to that, if you don't mind me. What we were finding to be important was it to be something unique, and again, focusing on something that each one of the board members had said is an important word or theme the night of the meeting prior to us meeting as a committee. So we were finding it more important to focus on including each and every current board member as an investment into the mission statement.
I guess what I'd like to have is a little feedback on everyone's thought on the first one. I'll let Carol go first because she was on that Policy Committee, too, and then we'll loop around and get what everyone's thought process is. Middell, you're a part of that policy, so.
Well, remembering that our focus is, as a board, what is our mission? And our responsibility is to our community. It's also to fiscal responsibility. It's to our students. All the things that each one of us mentioned at the prior meeting. And we wanted to make sure that that was upfront, that we're offering the best education for our students. We're looking at their future and where we're going with that best education. Yes, we are going to be fiscally responsible, although I'm not happy with the audit report. It would be great if we had more money. But what money we do have, we're trying very hard to provide the best programs with that money. We have to support our families in our community. We do that in a number of ways, with social work support. As a board, we've approved those people to be hired, to be with our students in the buildings. We've got the Family Resource Center to help our families. We've got community organizations. So we wanted to look at a well-rounded student, and that's our job as trustees, is to provide that well-roundedness to their education. And of course, we'd want to do it with respect, integrity, and transparency. So these are all the things that we did talk about, is what are we about as trustees?
Mr. Griffin, what is your thought on A?
Well, I'm -- Carol said it so well, I'm just going to reiterate. The only comment I have between the two, and definitely to my colleague, Mr. Buckaloo, I think that's a good program, too. But I like the word fiscal responsibility in there because as much as we want to do certain things in this district, and we could all, each one of us up here, could think of a lot of things we'd do if we had the money, our first responsibility is to live within our means with the best education possible. So that's kind of a key. All the rest, I love, I can, I mean, I'm not tied to either one, but that's something I am tied to in terms of having a mission because we just can't go spend money we don't have. Even though we want to have different programs, better programs, we've got to find a way to get the revenue to do so.
Dr. Weaver, your thoughts?
I have no problem with either one of these, A or B. If I just had to state a preference, I think B might say it just a little bit better, but I can, I can respect either one. Thank you.
Mr. Buckaloo, you brought some of the changes, so if you can tell us your thought process.
Well, for starters, when I looked at A, I saw some values and some beliefs that if we adopt these and make an effort to live by them, we're going to be a better board. Everything that is necessary for us in terms of the mission statement is there in A. I have no problem with the sentiment that's there. In fact, I would be most happy to vote for it. What I tried to do with the second version was to simply break it up by throwing a period in the middle. I see I have not included fiscal responsibility, and that's probably is a shortcoming on my part. I also left off the word "future." I thought that that was a redundancy. However, it might very well, in some people's minds, be a way of reinforcing an idea. So, you know, I don't feel strongly about that one way or the other. I think that B is a little bit more readable. And that's the biggest difference. I will support either one because, to be honest with you, those are the values and those are the beliefs that ought to drive this board.
Well, I personally, like, A first. I liked the idea that the Policy Committee decided to take a little bit of everybody's thought and put it into the mission statement so that it reflects the whole board. I, the only problem that I really have with B is I'm not too fond of the, this line, the unique nature of our students. For some reason, that just doesn't sit right with me, but that's just my personal opinion. But whatever the pleasure of the board is, we can go in that direction. So how do we want to handle the?
Well, regardless of which one we do. I'd like to see us put that optional comma back after integrity.
You said comma?
Yes.
Comma after integrity, before integrity, and "and."
Right after, very.
The very last line.
Put comma after integrity.
Well, if people, if, Tom, if you think two sentences would read better, a possibility that I just throw out for A is that we could say, "to provide the best education for our students' future," period. "We will do this through fiscal responsibility and by supporting all facets." Or "we will accomplish."
How does everyone feel about that?
I like that.
Okay. So.
What I like that I kept finding important is to keep it about each and every person up here, what they said. And I just, my preference, I don't want to lose that. I want to make sure that every person's voice is into that.
If we're all in agreeance on A with the A changes, if, at this time, if there's no other discussion, we can, someone, if they feel, can put a motion to accept A with the changes, if everyone's in agreeance?
I make a motion that we accept item A as our new.
Dr. Weaver, supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Somebody have somebody read it?
Do you want to read? Let's vote on it, and then we'll read it to the record. Is that fine, or how do you want to do it? Is the motion on the floor now?
I, okay, I have one other, I have one other thought, but let's vote on it first. That's my question.
Is the thought going to change anything?
No, the thought's not going to change anything. Yes. And the signature line is that our thought was, would be that after we adopt this.
Oh, that we all sign it?
That we all sign, that it is part, it becomes part of the process of the board every January, that you would sign this statement, that that's what the board is agreeing to.
That's a procedure.
So that would be part of a procedure.
So let's get the motion, vote on the motion, and then we can discuss the signature. So roll call vote, please. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mrs. Middell Roach?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes, let the record reflect the seven zero. Motion passes. So now, the suggestion is that we add a line and that everyone, this board and future boards to come, to sign, saying that they understand and will adhere to the mission of the board. Does anyone disagree with that? Nope, everyone's good? Okay, we can, we'll do that. All right. Moving on to item number one five two point one five, Superintendent report, Dr. Hamala.
Around our state, I shared earlier in the year that we had improved in the areas of both priority and focus schools. We went from seven focus schools in two thousand twelve, thirteen, to three in the thirteen fourteen year. We went from three priority schools down to one priority school in that same time period. Our efforts are really related to increased collaboration, a narrower and more defined focus on particular instructional strategies, and an overall coherence between our school and our district improvement efforts. We've been making our work much easier on ourselves by including some support from the Michigan Department of Education, as well as the Wayne Risa, and our instructional staff has been phenomenal in coordinating that work. As a result, both the Department of Education, as well as the Wayne Risa, are sharing what we are doing with other districts, and they're asking if we will share our success with them. In particular, Ingham County visited to see what we were doing and to see how we were doing our work about changing instruction in our classrooms. We have an upcoming sharing session with the Warren Consolidated School District, another district, again, that has heard about the work we've been doing and the changes we have made. Our Hamilton staff were asked by the Michigan Department of Education to do a presentation on their strategies for change. And most recently, Hicks Elementary has been asked to share the way they are combining their Leader and Me efforts with the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports at the upcoming Leader and Me Symposium. The strategies we're implementing that are assisting us with our increased success include our professional learning communities in all core and elective areas, utilization of best practices to enhance student engagement, interventions and enrichments for our students, and then strengthening our home and school partnerships. And I really would like to thank all of our staff for their commitment to our students in improving things in our classrooms and across our schools. Without every one of our teachers and school administrators and our educational services staff, we would not be having the success we are having. And I'd also like to point out that with the way the state has changed the assessment system, again, we don't see the efforts of our most recent work, which is last school year, because normally, we would assess in the fall, but we won't assess until the spring. So we know we're making changes, and the change in stature of each of those schools has demonstrated that. I almost wish, not really, everybody, that we were assessing this fall just so we could see yet again the improvement. So thank you to all of the staff, our teachers, and our parents and everybody for the hard work on that. November fourth is coming up. It's Election Day, but also, for us as a school staff, we have a Professional Development Day for our staff. Students do not attend school on November fourth. And I just want to say that I appreciate our families for supporting our staff and their professional growth. As we know, lifelong learning is an important piece, and it's important for all of us in the school setting, too. So I'd like to thank them, and also remind everybody of the importance of Election Day. On that note, I'd like to share some legislation to watch. It's not uncommon, after an election, to have the current legislature work rapidly to pass bills prior to a change in the makeup of that legislature due to the election results. It's important to stay tuned in to the legislative groups. And as Superintendent, I'll be watching potential bills and providing feedback to our senators and representatives so they understand the potential impact of these bills on our students and our district. A few bills of particular interest to me are House Bill four two eight one, which is related to the expanded use of sinking fund dollars for transportation and security efforts within school districts. House Bill five one one one, which would mandate the retention of third graders who do not score proficient on the state reading assessment. I will be watching that one closely, and am strongly opposed to any legislation that doesn't support an intervention but is asking that students simply be retained. House Bill five one one two, which would replace the current color coding grading system to a letter grading system. I could go on about that. And then House Bill five two two three and five two two four that outline new requirements for teacher and administrator evaluation. And I could talk a long time about that. But those will be items I'll be watching. There are many other education bills. I only hit a couple of them, and they are all still in the legislative process. They may or may not be given further consideration. I certainly will be watching and responding. If there's anyone with questions or comments, please feel free to ask. If you have questions, I'll help you get information you need. It'll be a critical time, and I think it's important for all of us to pay attention. And I know some of you were able to attend the most recent meeting with the Wayne Risa and the Wayne School Board to talk about legislative issues as well. So I hope some of those things came up for you. Last of all, school funding clarity. The Citizens Research Council did a very nice job of explaining where school funding is in Michigan. Likely, all of us are seeing and hearing the contradictory political ads, and we don't often know what to believe. This publication can be downloaded from the CRC website and is entitled "Making Sense of K-12 Funding." Essentially, the article reveals that funding is up. However, it is largely money that must go toward the state's retirement system. The article reveals that monies that support classrooms and programs is down and has been significantly impacted by the economy and policy decisions that have reduced revenue for the school aid fund and diverted state aid fund dollars to higher education. Finally, and most importantly, as you saw in our audit, the dollars we have today are fewer than we had in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, in fact, and if adjusted for inflation, would not likely have the same purchasing power as the dollar today. I highly recommend our community, or I'm sorry, it's the dollar then. I highly recommend our community look at this report to further their own understanding. School funding is a complex issue, and I think it's very important for us all to recognize what is going on right now in public education. And that concludes my sharing for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. Moving on to item number one five three point one five, Citizen Comments, non-agenda items. Do we have anyone who wants to speak? Well, hold on. I knew I was going to call you first.
Nobody else raised their hand? Just a quick question. Who are the delegates for the MASB Delegate Assembly? They weren't. They weren't mentioned.
Mr. Admitsky, if you can go to the, or you go upstairs to the podium.
I thought you said it was at the end of the podium.
This is the end. Please say your name, purely for the record, and address. You have three minutes.
You're wrong. My name is Adam Salam Adamsky, three two seven one one, Michigan Avenue. I am chairman of American Israelis for Peace. That is a political action committee that was formed in two thousand and three. Under the Open Meeting Act, when a group speaks, the person has five minutes, so I have five minutes, not three minutes. I'm not here to speak as a candidate. I'm here to educate and give people some knowledge of what's been going on in the world. Your mission statement, and I'll just pick up on that stage, "to be knowledgeable, responsible, contributing members of a global society." So I'm going to concentrate on the global society. You have to forgive me here because I'm a little tired. I just came back from Doha, Qatar. Nineteen hours of flying. So basically, I haven't had any sleep for twenty-four hours. The purpose of me going to Qatar was to meet with the king and the queen, Khalifa, to ask them to fund a movie about the Israeli attack on USS Liberty on June eighth, nineteen sixty-seven, where the Israeli military murdered thirty-four Americans and injured one hundred. sixty-seven, where the Israeli military murdered thirty-four Americans and injured one hundred twenty-nine, machine gunned them and torpedoed the ship as they were trying to get back. There's never been a movie made about this, and Lyndon Johnson ordered a cover-up on this, and what the purpose was, was to ask them to fund it with Clint Eastwood being the director. So I got halfway. They told me they would fund the movie. I don't know what it would cost, fifty million, a hundred million, but they said I have to convince Mr. Eastwood to be the director. So let me get some rest, and probably Thursday I'll fly to California, and I'll try to meet with Mr. Eastwood and make the proposal to him about making this movie. You see, the Israelis have brainwashed the American people for years, and they played a victim role. They used the Holocaust card, when in essence they're nothing but an illegal state. And how they became an illegal state was in nineteen forty-eight, Harry Truman was running for election. And how he won the election was the Jewish-American community gave him the funds, and in the state of New York, they were the deciding vote, and the payback was that when Israel applied to be in the United Nations, the United States would say, okay, uh, they're gonna be a sovereign nation. But unfortunately, what they did is they pushed the Palestinian people out, where that land was really the Palestinians. It belonged to the Palestinians. It still does. Uh, before President Obama was sworn in as president...
I'm sorry, sir, that's your time. We only allow three minutes at the school board. That is our policy. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to one five four point one five. Review or recommendations, Board of Education. Mrs. Madison?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
No comment.
Dr. Weaver?
I have some comments. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Larson Schidler and his department uh for continuing the longstanding tradition in Wayne Westland of obtaining awards for financial accountability and transparency. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Kim Dolman, and I'm sure she's going to do an excellent job. Um, Madam President, I want to take just a moment uh to um speak um concerning some emails that have been sent. I want to respectfully apologize to Mr. Fro Rich and Ms. Hines uh for my comments concerning the board record at the last board meeting. It is true that um I should have read the election law for myself and not uh leaned so much on those who um have told me in times past what the election law was. Now, to my fellow board members, I would ask the following questions. How much is too much, and where does it end? If it's true that the election law is wide open, then what's next? Candidates going room to room, interrupting teachers during instruction time, asking for their vote? Board members openly endorsing candidates from their seats? Uh, board members discussing candidates uh openly, uh, those candidates who not uh received the endorsement of the observer? Um, you know, what, what's coming next? I think that uh there is a letter of the law, and there is a sense or spirit of the law, and in my opinion, um, this superintendent and board uh should uh contact our attorney and legislators um to make sure that this letter of the law uh be addressed so that we can uh look at um future elections and how we're going to respond to it. The last thing I have tonight is uh many of my fellow board members have heard that uh my wife was the custodian of um a hundred-and-eight-year-old lady, um, Mabel Ewall. She attributed her long life, she lived a hundred-and-eight years, she attributed her long life to the fact that she never married or had children. She died two weeks ago after living a long life and being full of years. What allows me to bring this up here tonight is, in this venue, is just very short and incredible story. Uh, she had to um leave school at a very early age to support her father. Her mother was dead at that point to support her father. But what allows me to bring this up now is that at eighty-five years old, she went back to Wayne Westland Schools and obtained her high school diploma. And for those who are listening tonight, please note that it's never too late to come back and get your degree. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Schofield?
Thank you, President Walker. Um, a couple of things. First of all, while I agree that the decision to demolish Glen Chet Middle School was the right decision for um for this board to make, and I agree that it's the right decision for the Wayne Westland School District as a whole, I feel for the Inchester community. Um, that community has been hard-hit in recent years, and the loss of their school district is just one more hit for them. And while we have to make the right decisions that are, is the right decision for the entire school district, I recognize that it's not necessarily the best decision for their community. And I challenge those of us that sit on this board and those of us that um work in this school district to make sure that we provide opportunities for that community to still feel like a community, whether it's activities in buildings, whether it's um events that we help co-host with their community, but that we look for opportunities to create that sense of community for them that they have lost um through the loss of their school district. And I know that we're going into the second year of this, but I still sense that there is a great loss out there in the Inchester community, and it's not something that they're going to get over. It's, it's really going to create, i- it's just gonna be an ongoing issue. So I just challenge us to remember that as we're making decisions, that these are homeowners, these are families that have lost um part of their identity. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Tom Gibson and the Wayne Memorial Boys Cross Country Team. We were able to be down there on the cross-country field um a week or so ago while we watched them win um another cross-country race, and they are the first Wayne Memorial High School Team to win a division championship since we joined the Kensington Valley Kensington Lakes, I was gonna say, Valley doesn't sound right, Kensington Lakes Association, and they are flying high. They, it, the team, uh, my boys ran cross-country, um, uh, Jacob graduated in two thousand and eight, so the last season we had a, a sun run was two thousand and seven, and Mr. Gibson, Coach Gibson, has done a tremendous job with that team over the last few years, and kudos to him and to the boys, and they, they're just a fantastic group of kids. And the girls, while the girls weren't up there with the boys, the, the girls set personal records virtually every meet, and just a great, great group of kids. And then finally, congratulations to the business department. We appreciate all the hard work that um we put into, to the business department, and we appreciate when the auditors come that we get such good, clean audits. It makes our job easier.
It's my job easier, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Schofield, and Mrs. Madell.
Well, like I said, we've been able to keep a lot of different programs in our district with decreasing funding, and one of those programs is something that we are missing tonight, and that's the Upward Bound program. Uh, due to scheduling conflicts, we are missing their banquet tonight, but the, it's not all about the food. It's about listening to the students and their successes that they have accomplished through this program. Uh, another program that we offer in this district is our Honor Society programs, and there have been several Honor Society inductions that have taken place that uh shows we have outstanding students in our district. We've also had a couple of different schools buy into the watchdog program, and for those of you who do not know, those are dads of great students, and they are getting the fathers into the schools to be a positive role model for other students, and I think there's just a little bit of, you know, big, big thrill for the, their own child that their dad is in there, uh, working with other students and being a part of a supervisory capacity, making sure that our students are safe. John Glenn Wayne High had Homecoming, and was another chance to see our students in a positive light, marching bands, floats, you name it. They did a great job, and the themes were appropriate and carried out well at each of the schools. We also had a drug program that we offered that was written up in the local newspaper and also made the metropolitan media. It was a channel two, period, the story about our drug program here to inform parents about an issue that's facing our community with a new drug that we need to worry about as parents and our students. We're going into that time of the year where our schools are offering all kinds of great opportunities for parents, grandparents, caregivers, uh, aunts and uncles to come into the district for science night, math night. Uh, I got a chance to go to Marshall. Not only were the students engaged, but the parents, adults were engaged in the activities and seeing how critical thinking skills are applied to a different content area other than just math. And everybody was actively involved in participating in what they had set up for the students. Also coming up, we have fall conferen- uh, not conferences, I wanted to mention concerts first, but I, I said conferences. Conferences are coming up, high school first, followed by middle and elementary, so make sure that you check your calendars so that you know which nights, um, in fact, I think high school is this week at both Wayne High and John Glenn. But concerts, it's that time of the year for fall concerts. Um, it's always interesting going to a fourth grade concert. Always interesting, but those kids are trying so hard uh to accomplish uh learning an instrument and working with the other student musicians around them to work together on a piece of music. It isn't all about solo and, and ensemble when you're working in a, a, a school setting. We've got a lot of fall festivals, drug retreat going on. Again, another positive experience for our students. We've got high school plays coming up. Uh, John Glenn's, I think, is first, followed by Wayne High's. Um, I, I don't remember offhand what they are performing, but if you are interested, give each high school a call and go and visit. We also have Michael Fallon coming into both of our high schools. Uh, this gentleman comes, I think, just about every year for the last couple of years to talk to our students. He talks about bullying, self-esteem, and those are very two important topics when dealing with our adolescents, and coping, how to be a better person, how to value yourself and value the others around you. So he will be coming to each one of the high schools. Congratulations to our business department, and congratulations to Mrs. Dol- Mrs. Dolman, and it wouldn't be a monthly meeting without hearing about the Head Start Financial Report as required by federal law. So if you'll make sure that you take a look of that, at that. Our program is fully enrolled right now. Yes, we will take your name and put it on a, a waiting list because students do drop out from time to time, whether they move or something happens, but we are always looking for students. The Great Start Program still needs students, so if you have a preschooler out there in the community or know of one down the street, or maybe a nephew, niece, whatever, please give them a call. We have some really great programs going on at Stollmeyer. With that said, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Mr. Buckaloo?
Mrs. Dolman, congratulations. Good luck in your new role. I'm sure you'll be just fine.
Okay.
You're gonna have some great support from the administration. Um, I'd like to thank Vanessa and Skylah and Julia Ryopel and Ms. Gurry for bringing them by to get us off to a, a good start with the uh, the national, excuse me, the place of allegiance today. I appreciate that. Mostly, I'd like to talk about the audit. This is a fantastic job again this year, like last year, and I'm assur- I'm assuming next year as well. Um, Mr. Larson Schidler, Stollmeyer, Ms. Rosson, you've done a fantastic job. If all we were doing, if all we were doing was some simple bookkeeping, it would be one thing, but that isn't it. Every year, new reporting requirements show up from the federal government and from the state government, and the rules that you used last year have to be changed to fit the requirements for the current year. It goes on and on and on. We come up with a budget each year, we, Mr. Larson Schidler does, and he makes it work to about one percent uh of the total budget, and he does that with no control over the revenue that the district receives. They have no say in. We have no say in how much money this district receives. However, we are told how to spend about twenty-five percent of it. That has to go to, to the pension fund. So there are some built-in inadequacies in the whole system, and, and you persevere and slog your way through that and do us well. We are a financially responsible district, have been, and will continue to be under your leadership. I'm certain of that. Dr. Hamala talked about the post-election session of Congress, uh, of the state legislature, sometimes known more affectionately as the lame duck session. This is a time when we have a lot of members of, of the state legislature who aren't coming back because their term limited out. They can't run again, or perhaps because they've been defeated. And quite frankly, at this point in their legislative careers, there's no responsibility in terms of uh complaints from the electorate. They can do pretty much what they want because they won't be back next year. This is a scary time for education because there are a lot of legislators in Lansing who are not all that friendly towards public education. And that's a fact of life that may not be the wisest thing to say, but it's the truth. They don't particularly care for us, and you can see that uh in the fact that, that our uh money per student is less this year than it was, what, eight years ago, nine years ago? This is, this is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous that we continue to try to fund a school district with no control over the revenue, a shrinking revenue, and without a hundred percent control over our expenses. So wish us well, say a prayer for us in that post uh November election period, which we're gonna need.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. As always, when it's time it gets to me, most of my colleagues have already covered everything. Just to say it again, I just want to thank the students again for coming out and doing the flag, Vanessa, Skylah, and Julia Ryopel. Um, as always, thank you to the business office. It's a wonderful job that's done. Mrs. Dolman, thank you, um, and welcome, and congratulations on your position. Um, I just wanted to, the question came up about our M A S B Fall Conference. The M A S B Fall Conference is where um board members are able to go and get, take classes and get their certifications for their uh, for the, to get certified as board members. And the question was, who was represented, who were going this year from the board? And as far as I know, um, Mrs. Madell, Mr. Buckaloo, Dr. Weaver, and myself will be attending Fall Conference. Fall Conference. With that being said, as always, thank you for coming out. Your time here spent is greatly appreciated. Thank you to the Boards of Education this evening. They're working well, and we did accomplish some great things tonight. And as always, motion to adjourn is always in order. It's moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mrs. Schofield, all in favor. I call the motion here.